I don't want to be hasty. We rush, we make mistakes. We don't want to do that. It's very important.
Okay. Any others?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Bautramini?
In answer to the timing question, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Kirwin and although it may be difficult, that particular night for me to be there at six o'clock, I think it's the right time for council to address that issue. It gives us enough time to discuss it, ask questions. The Police Department is the biggest part of the budget and they are the most important component of keeping the community safe, so.
My question is, if we need more time than from six to seven fifteen, can we delay, pardon?
I'm sorry, I thought you would take three or four hours on this.
Okay, so, we're going to not have a regular council meeting that night, correct? So what do we have to do? Do we have to vote on, uh?
The, I'm sorry.
That's where, that's where my question is.
My apologies, the mechanics are up to you. We can have, I mean, I can tell my staff, which is everybody except for Lori, put nothing on this agenda and so you can call it a regular meeting and have one item at six o'clock and that's the ICMA study item. You can call it a special meeting, whatever you feel comfortable with, we'll accommodate. Cause my next question is, what do you want to do with the public engagement study item also scheduled for the seventh?
Right. Councilwoman Bautramini?
Which was where I was going. I think we had a brief discussion earlier and we said that we would decide whether or not to put that item on next week's agenda or March seventh, based on the resultant discussion this evening. So, it would seem to me that we're still within our notice requirements if we fixed whatever for March seventh at the same time. So we can do that later tonight or first thing on the agenda, February twentieth. And that's, that would be my preference, is to not make that decision right now, but to move on.
All right. That's where I was going on that too, to find out where we wanted to do. Any other council comments?
Okay, sorry. I, I hate to be both sides here, but people have come in from across the United States. Can I tell them tonight to be here at six o'clock? Or at seven thirty on the seventh?
Probably by the end of the evening, six is fine.
Mayor?
If we're not going to have any other council items on just that, we can go with seven thirty. That's the determination. I know. You just soon may go meet at six and go till ten. All right. Tell them six o'clock and we'll go till ten.
Thank you.
You okay with everybody? Okay. All right. Just decide. Any other items? Okay, we're in recess. We'll do the study item in the other room. Without, John, he, he said he'd be back in just a few minutes. In the study session. I thought it was interesting in the paper that the Free Press editorial was talking about very thing that we've been talking about, the fact that we need to poll our citizens. And I know at one point I talked briefly with, um...
Councilmember Bautramini.
About polling and because I was very interested in doing that. And I think the public engagement piece is important, but it's not just polling. And you put in your memo some from all your many, many committees, some ideas and different things for us to think about. So I don't know how much time people had to read that, but I do think that we should take care of discussing each one and then seeing what we want to do. You also said we need to look at dollars, staff time, facilitator time, et cetera, with it, which is an important factor.
Well, and it, and my list wasn't meant to be exhaustive, but you know, first, what do we want? I mean, and then that may determine how we want to get it.
You know, um, Madam Mayor?
How's your response for Dan Kirwin?
ICMA, the ICMA study pointed out some, I think, failings from leadership. And the, one failing is our contact with our staff. Because ICMA said, you know, we've interviewed staff and you really should look at the results because some staff members are not quite where we were thinking that everybody would be in terms of what we've just have declared as our vision and goals and dreamlining and all of that. And that is a failure in leadership. We had talked about and had iterated, in fact, in the original Gold Generation, stakeholders. A whole slew of stakeholders. And I think it would be advisable for us to meet with all of the, a whole slew of stakeholders. And the suggestion I had thought about and the part it comes from in here is to have community, face-to-face community conversations with different groups. Not every council member will be able to be at every single group, nor, nor is it a requirement. But I think the outreach to groups such as, and here's, here's the listing that I had been thinking about, clearly staff. An opportunity to meet with staff and look at our vision and goals where we want to go and have that, what do you think, conversation. Opportunity to meet with boards and commission members. Opportunity to meet with, tonight we had someone from Citizens Academy. We have Police Academy. We have seniors. We have youth. All segments. And I thought, in thinking about this and looking at Councilmember Bautramini's suggestion, one mechanism for this would be to just do it by doodle. Doodle is just that online dating syst- date syst- dating system. That online calendar system where, you know, just put yes for all the dates you would be available for this. And then have staff take that group of dates and make an outreach for an evening. Post it. The attorney could determine however it has to be posted, if council members are there. Just however the posting must be. It is an open meeting, clearly, but it should be the conversation, here's the, the council's vision, here are the goals, what do you think? And the part two of it, which, which was really led by the ICMA study and the conversation at the table tonight. In terms of going forward as a city, what do you want? And are you willing to pay for it? And how much? That conversation about where we are as a city, what we want to look like, what do you want, face-to-face dialogue is important. There are all these other strategies for engagement as well. Whether it's in here as the website, whether it is on Facebook, Twitter, whether it is through the statistically significant survey. All of those opportunities for people to give that input so that we have made a genuine attempt to hear and understand. When we had the charrette for the master plan, as some of us recall, there were just stations in a room where people could go and sit down and have a talk and move on. The charrette had an easy pace. People were able to, to really feel comfortable about moving towards things. I was thinking of that kind of a style rather than, you know, a formalized where we all line up. I'm really not at all interested in lining up on a stage and having a microphone go out there. Really want to just have that ability to sit face-to-face with groups. And you call them tabletops or study circles or, I can't remember what you call them, it's your turn, but basically that, just a group of chairs, sit down and chat a bit. So, so those are some ideas that I wanted to share under, under some of the strategies I had thought about.
Well, I, I think that there are several things we're looking at here. One, we're looking at people in the community who want to come in person to talk to us about things. And then we have people in the community that don't want to come, but they want to give us their input and information. And they can do it in, through a phone survey, which would be significant. And then we could say, you know, these numbers especially, you know, they're looking at the certain numbers and they can extrapolate it out. And the other is something through a computer where they could go in, put in their address or their parcel number or something. And if they want to put their name in, they can, but they don't have to. But we have to have some way when you do it electronically that we know that we're getting people from Troy to indicate it and, and that people are only doing it once. Not that somebody's going in ten times and saying, okay, I'm going to mark this, you know, and skew the numbers. It's like when they go to, to vote, you know, they have their voter registration.
I forgot about the futures people too.
And, so we've really got two different things we're talking of, or several.
Multiple, multiple things.
Oh yeah, multiple.
All those outreach, all of them.
What about the rest of you? What do you, what do you think about community engagement? Councilwoman Pine?
One thing I think would be helpful is just have small communication meetings. Have maybe the city manager, finance, present to people. Because you've got the same group of people that come to these meetings and talk every time. But there's a lot of people out there that don't come to the city council meeting, not engaged. I know the school districts use this. They're doing this now. They're going around and they're establishing, they have a schedule, they're establishing the meetings. Board members can come, council members could come in this, this case. But to communicate for, to people where we are, lay it out, a few slides where we are. Cause not everybody watches the counseling. And then give them an opportunity to ask questions. But try to do it in locations where you would attract different groups of people. And I, I think that, I don't want to call them special interest groups, but some of the ones you, you talked about, you know, they're the same people that come and they, you see the same faces. I'm trying to think of a way to get different people engaged. And everybody's busy, but just a thought, I know that Superintendent of the School, Dr. Fowler's doing that now, going around and she's using, you know, different people. And they're, and they're making presentations and asking for feedback at the meeting. I think it can't be one way. I think we have to do multiple ways to get the, the pulse of the community.
I know, we used to have homeowners groups active in the community.
Right.
Where they, they had a homeowners association. And I remember years ago, people, if they're running for council or whatever, they, or staff want to present something, they'd go around to those different ones. They were already established groups and then different people would come. And with the school district, they, they already had those set up. They had elementary schools, they had middle schools. We don't have that already set up. That's where it's more of a logistics problem.
And I think it's time for the electeds to speak. I really do. We did a year ago, staff went out, they did those presentations, they had that group, they met wherever people wanted them to meet, in churches or wherever. And I think it is time for, for the leaders to go out, to present our goals and vision and see where, if we're resonating.
Somebody else want, before I go back to you, Robin, do you, do you want to see? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, obviously I'm, I'm in support of some combination of this. I think we just need to get to that deciding factor of what responsibility will be ours as council members and what responsibility will fall to staff. I, you know, I feel like it's going to be some combination of both. But I think we have to make that clear in what our expectations are in city management and staff can make it clear what their expectations are. Obviously, we're at that breaking point with some, you know, some of the different departments as it is, that to ask them to generate a whole pilot program to go out and help us garner response is, is not what I want to do. And I'm sure it would be met with feedback. So I think we have to kind of decide what responsibility will be our own and what are we expecting of the staff? You know, if it's coordinating information or if it's scheduling dates or if it's being able to utilize Cindy Stewart to get the word out, whatever those things may be. I think we kind of have to come up with what responsibility we're going to accept on our own behalf or as a council and what we're going to be expecting the staff. Because I kind of feel like that's the roadblock that we're coming up against. I think everyone feels like we would like to get this input, but not quite sure what our individual responsibilities are versus what we can do possibly better collectively. So I think that that's kind of something that we need to decide. And just in my own notes, I had also thought of the, the concept of homeowners associations and having that. It's not an established group where we would already have that in place, but I know that there are many homeowners associations that are active. If they weren't active before, they're probably getting active again. And, you know, what that is, but I, you know, what that, that's a possibility that we can reach out to that's not going to be reinventing the wheel. But I, I think that we kind of need to have a discussion tonight about, you know, what are the first steps? Is it really something that we see as we want it to come from inside City Hall and be announced that way and have people show up and who's responsible for, for providing the information. But I think until we decide what responsibility we're going to take on ourselves and what we're asking of staff, this, you know, this, we're not really coming up with anything definitive until we get there. So, you know, that would, and I'm willing to take on whatever responsibility needs to be taken on to do that. But I think we kind of, one, it's better for us sitting here having a discussion about it. So it doesn't look like I'm out having the Maureen McGinnis Show by myself and, and trying to garner, you know, response that way and maybe going to places that I'm anticipating getting the response that I want.
Sure.
So I, I think if we have that discussion here so that it's open and people know that this is the direction that we're going in, if it's going to be these meetings that we're out in the community, everybody's on board. And if Councilman Fleming wants to come, he knows when it is and he can come and he can have conversations with the same people that anyone else is having a conversation with. So I think that we need to decide to do that. And I think we need to get moving. You know, the other piece, I think in terms of garnering, whether it's written feedback or electronic surveys, and that is available to us. I think it's just making that decision, do, do we want to go that route? And yes, we would have to ask city staff to help us prepare a bid to get a company to put that together if it's not something we're capable of doing inside the city. I think in terms of setting up face-to-face conversations, we have a, the ability then to provide written communications at those meetings and people can respond as well. And I think that that has benefits as well because we will know people attending those meetings will get the information that we want to make sure is available and then they can base their responses on that information rather than just some of the standard emails that we started getting today. I don't know about anybody else, but.
Councilwoman Slater, Councilwoman Horlak, you have the resolution that was before us to go for the three companies. And Councilwoman Horlak, I'm sure you have some ideas on, on these kinds of things too. Would you like to speak on that before I call on Councilwoman Bautramini? I know she's got more input.
Well, I, you know, I did do the resolution for the survey. I thought, I thought that that's the first thing we should do is, is find out what the citizens want from us. I think we all think we know what we, what they want, but I don't think we know what they want. So that, that's why I brought that up was to start with a survey. I, I think those are good ideas going out in the community. I remember when there was COCA, which was, which was the, all of the homeowners association presidents met monthly, which I always felt was a good place that you could go. But I do think going to homeowners associations is a good way to go because then you can get people in subdivisions. And I think there's still a lot of those out there. There's one in my sub still.
Right, yeah.
So I do think that's a good resource. I don't know if the Police Department still keeps a database on that or not.
Well, you know what they, they do have though. They do send out the crime report to, to groups of people. So that might be a way to invite, you know, assorted people to come to things. I didn't put down business vote, but maybe the chamber would be another.
My other thing was I know that John's doing his roundtables and is supposed to be getting us together with those leaders. And I think that's a good opportunity. Maybe John, John has an update on that.
I haven't.
If not, I do think that's a good opportunity.
Staff and I meet once a month with anywhere between four and six businesses. And they normally employ between maybe three to seven thousand people in the aggregate each, each month that we meet. And we have an agenda. It's very informal. What we do essentially is indicate that we don't have all the ideas, that we would like to know what they like about the city of Troy and what they think we could do better as a municipality in terms of business retention and attraction. That's all we talk about is retention and attraction of business. And we, we get some good ideas. In fact, I'm going to tag a few of them to take a look at the ICMA report as well and, and have them comment upon that. I've had more than a couple of members indicate that they want to talk directly to council about the direction the city's going and, and the services that are proposed to be cut based on the budget reductions that we have. And I was waiting essentially for phase two of the ICMA report to come in and then see if I can schedule a study session with the city council. And some or all of the people that I've been talking to the past seven months. But their, their spin and their input on, on, on what we're doing from a legislative, if you will, perspective.
Councilwoman Horlak, did you want to give some input on this?
I do think that Councilwoman Bautramini has put, put to paper some good questions. And as far as sustainability of the city, at some point, those questions will need to be answered. And the concern that I have is also timing. Meaning, is it really, how productive will it be to do that this year? We probably need to, well, we probably needed those answers a long time ago, but, you know, I, you know, there, there's a diff- this is a difficult thing to do. And there's no absolute answer. I mean, theoretically, we could have the answer to these and then we put something that needs voter approval or what have you, and it, and it goes nowhere. So, I think, I think there are good questions. I'm just not really sure how we can get answers back in a timeframe that is usable. There are a lot of other factors that come into play that we have absolutely no control over and that could make this a lot more difficult, particularly on the timeframe of this year. I also think that it's important to, for process improvement, to make sure the end users are surveyed. And I know that we have done that in the past. And the cost for that is very small, very, very small. And that at least helps with process improvement for the areas of the city where we have something that not all of the city is using. Or, you know, even, even with services that we provide that the whole city is using. And even though we may be doing something that's ninety-five percent good, if we have the ability to, you know, tweak things to make those that are unhappy with the service happy, then by all means we should do that. So that's, that's all I have to add.
I, I agree with you bringing up the fact, the time factor, Councilwoman Horlak, because that was my concern about getting some information sooner rather than later. And, but then also spreading out to the, the community. I think that, you know, we hear from people on Monday nights, but we see a lot of the same people over and over. And what I'd like to do is get information from a broader spectrum of the community. And what I'd like to do is get information from a broader spectrum of the community in, in several ways. But I do think that some of these answers to these questions, we need them sooner rather than later, Councilman Horlack, just, just as you've indicated there. Councilman Beltrame?
I'm sitting here...
The holding back.
No, no, no. I'm sitting here fidgeting because I think that this discussion is symptomatic of why everyone is confused about what we do here. If you are going, if we, if we want to involve the public in finding out, I, I heard Mayor Protam Kerwin say, "I want to take council's vision and goals and see how they're resonating." I heard Councilman Slater, and I don't think I'm misinterpreting, saying, "What do the citizens want?" Thinking in terms of level of service and what they're willing to give up. I heard Councilman Fleming say, "We need to give them good information on where we are." Well, folks, you know what? We, we need to do any and all of those things, absolutely. But we cannot do them all together. So what do we want to do first? And what is the best way to do that within the timeframe that whatever that first thing's answer needs to be? So, so that's kind of where I am with this, and that's why I'm fidgeting, is we all can wrap our arms around the mechanics of any one of these ideas on page two. But the crux of the matter is, do you want to discuss level of service? Do you want to discuss council's priorities? What do you want input on? Do you want input on a tax rate? What is your foundational input that you need so that we can make a good decision, be it on the budget, be it on whether or not the library is really going to close on the thirtieth of April? I mean, I think that we've all decided that there's not a pot of money there. So what, what are you going to do and what do you want to know?
Councilor Kerwin?
It goes back to three weeks ago when we adopted the vision and goals. And the question was, what was the next step? Everybody looked at the manager. And the next step was community engagement, was checking with the community. That's really what that was. We have declared them, and now they're not going anywhere. Shouldn't they be shared with staff? Yes, they should. Now, when we're, we're sitting there sharing, then that is the idea that finally we have conversations with people. There has not been an intention to do that during all these years of service. There hasn't been an intention on this leadership part to connect with folks on a, on a face-to-face basis. It's time that we do that. There is... Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Councilman Slater?
I agree with Martin a hundred percent. If we don't do it timely, there's really no, there's no reason to do a survey. I, I started this with a survey for a reason. I wanted to get it going quickly. I tried to get it going quickly, so, and my date to try and get, I think I even mentioned April fifteenth would be almost a drop-dead date for me to get information back because of the library issue. I really want to, I really want to know whether it's worth pursuing a couple of things before the budget. And I thought we need by April fifteenth or don't do it. But that's my opinion. If we can't get the data that we need to make some decisions on the budget, I don't think we should do it, or at least not now, not, not bother with it. So I guess my question is, can we do it by the fifteenth? If we can't, then let's move on.
So you're talking about the one, one survey, but not all the strategies we're talking about?
No. I, I think we, I think we gotta, we have to, we have to do one at a time here. So if we want to do a survey, we got to get going on it. And I think it has to be done by April fifteenth. So we have our data for the budget and the library. Those are the two important things to me anyways. So I, I agree with all of your other stuff, but if we want to do it, we have to get going. To do it timely, if we don't, I, I agree with it.
And it is quick, it is quicker to do a, a survey that way with a company, you know, that does it, and then have our meetings with them. Because it's going to take a long time to meet, but it's going to take a long time to meet with different...
Well, all of it is necessary. We have not met with people.
Meetings in the community, Councilwoman Kerwin, I'm still talking, during the, when we meet with homeowners' groups or business groups or whatever, that's going to take time, the scheduling, setting up and everything. This other, we say, come up with companies that do this. We all know companies that have done this. We've all participated in some. And give us your data. And we've got the data. That's one piece. And then we can set up these other things after that. I'm not saying we shouldn't do the face-to-face conversations. I'm just saying the face-to-face is going to take longer.
Well, and clearly we could meet with staff or extended invitation without any of that, because that's, that's a piece that we've been missing and that, we were seated for that.
Councilman Horlack?
A cou, a couple of things. One is, you know, it's, again, these, these questions that Councilwoman Beltrame has placed here are good questions from a policy standpoint. Now, at the end of the day, the city council, and it doesn't really matter whether it be two thousand and eleven at this council or two thousand and twelve in, in that council or two thousand and fifty-two, these questions always have to be answered, and they're, they're not necessarily static either. The problem I see with doing, I see a number of problems with trying to do a scientific analysis, if you will, this year. One, it's an election year. Two, what do you do and how in the world do you incorporate conditional responses? Meaning, let's say, for example, that, that it comes back and the mil levy rate that this community believes it should have is ten point two. But what if it's split all over the shop, meaning that, you know, in order to get to that majority, there are conditions that they're expecting to have happen, and they need to find out what they are? I'm not even sure that that's something you could do in a one-shot. And then there's also the question of whether or not we can even afford to continually survey to get to that answer. And so I just wanted to add that.
I am not sure that, for right now, today, we can put a mil levy question on a survey to muddle level of service. And that's just my own personal opinion. I do agree with Martin. That is something that ultimately we want an answer to, and we have to have an answer to, and sooner rather than later. But going back to your survey, the other thing you can, those kinds of questions, you can rotate in and out of an online survey. And those are also the kinds of questions where you would want someone just representing themselves one time. Now, you put some focus group-style questions there, and you want that give and take, because ultimately, it is that give and take that will result usually in a solution to the issue from the citizen. And I, and I think that that is some of their frustration with us, is we have taken good professional direction and made unilateral choices without anything but tally mark sort of input. And, and I'm sorry, that's all that is, is tally mark sort of input, not any truly, let me think about this, let me learn about this. And, you know, staff did a very good job last year before the February election with their meeting in a box presentations, but they could only go as far as people would invite them. And so if you're going to do that sort of thing, you do need all of those people that Mary mentioned, but the Columbus Club and those cross-section groups, the homeowners' association, where you've got all kinds of people living in a neighborhood to make those effective. And we weren't able to do that. But quickly, yeah. But what do you want to know on that survey? Do you want to know if we're going down the right path? Do you want to know that this... And, and you cannot, you can do other things simultaneously.
Absolutely. I think that's what we have to do.
We don't have to do this in a linear manner to get the answer to this, to go forward to that. There are many, you know, you can do these things linearly, but you, you also can do many things at once. But it goes back to Maureen's point about, okay, you've got reduced staff by a bunch, and we need to step up and give some of our time, and which is why I said, you know, we can call the vets. Chuck Tappus doesn't need to call the vets. We can do that. But those are the kinds of things. We got to put some skin in the game too.
Councilman, again?
About the work that was already done with ICMA, where they went through and worked with each department and had each department li, almost itemized, line by line, each service that they provide. And it was very specific. And, and I think that there was also, there were also designations next to them as to whether they were considered mandatory, essential, you know, complimentary. I can't remember the terminology that was used, but that was a lot of work that went into that survey to get that specific information. And I think rather than, you know, kind of already directing the questions to elicit a certain response, I mean, we could take some of those things that have already been itemized and put them into a survey. So one, it's going to educate the people taking the survey as to, look at all these services that are provided by this department that I had no idea were available, or were their responsibility, or were even being taken, you know, undertaken. And then list, you know, is this service important to you? Is this something that you can live without? Is this service something, you know, whatever the, the way that you want to set up the question. But I think that can give us a general response of, you know, what people see as something that they absolut, and right now, we're kind of making some of those decisions within the department. And I think that's a good place to have those decisions made, obviously, looking at animal control services. I mean, this is a, a department head and, and the staff that's very competent, making those decisions based on usage and costs. But I think if we were to put that out there, that might be a way to figure out, you know, where people, you know, kind of like a baseline. I mean, where people think their services absolutely can't change and where they'd be willing to maybe make some sacrifices that we wouldn't have thought of on our own. I mean, and I'm sure that there might be some things that come back. We would have to, to streamline it so that the things that are required, and we can't ask them, you know, to, to give up because they're required by law, wouldn't be on the table. But there's a whole list of services in there that, that might be a starting point, I guess, when you're talking about figuring out what level of acceptable service will work.
So I'm interested in getting costs of what it would cost a company to do a telephone survey and what it would cost to do a, a computer survey. That's where I'm going on all this. Not, I mean, that's my, my first priorities on this. And the other things are fine, but I think that'll give us data that we can, it's hard data.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, others can say what they want on, on what they want, but that's what I want to get done.
Considering the hour? If that clock works, I'm not sure it does. It seems to be working today.
It's always eleven o'clock.
I move that we reconsider the resolution from earlier today regarding the date on the resolution.
Oh, the resolution. Move it to the, you want to move it to the twenty eighth?
Well, we have to move to reconsider it first and then we, if we can move to reconsider.
Right. Is there a second?
No second.
Moved by Mayor Protam Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we reconsider the date of...
H two.
Pardon?
H two.
Yeah, that's right.
The postponement.
Pardon? Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
You're showing?
Yes. Motion passes?
Are there something you need from?
Well, wait, wait, that's in the second part.
Now you amend the date to the...
Excuse me.
Just a second. No, dropping the gun.
Two twenty eight, two twenty, okay.
The two twenty eight. Moved by Com, uh, Mayor Protam Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we have H two as an item on February twenty eighth. Discussion? The vote?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Beltrame?
What do we want in these survey bids? I mean, you can't just tell John that two days he's got to have surveys and not tell him what he's surveying for. I mean, do we want to take the first two, five, whatever, from each department in the ICMA study and say, "These are the things that are going to be cut"? How do you feel about that? Agree, disagree, whatever? Do we want to offer up that if these things are cut early, if we find enough funding, or figure out what it would take to find enough funding for the library instead? I, I, I mean, he has no idea what he's going to ask these people to survey, let alone how. I mean, are you talking twenty questions, ten questions? Online, phone, both, either?
Madam Mayor?
See, I think it should be simple.
Yeah, I think...
Yes.
There, there are, a number of cities, there are a number of, well, there are a number of, of cities that actually have been conducting similar surveys. So I imagine that through the managers' associations, one would know of, of multiple firms and, and how they have done that. So I imagine, let him review what those would be in finding those specific companies.
I don't, I don't wish to be argumentative, especially at, after eleven o'clock. But when someone takes a survey, they expect an outcome, okay? And in the context of that outcome, there's real things that we have done and that we're doing. We have a budget through fiscal year thirteen. John and staff are working on a budget, and I'll see it eventually as we speak. That'll include through fiscal year fourteen. City council adopted core competencies of police, fire, infrastructure maintenance at the expense of libraries, museums, nature centers, with an indication that the recreation center has to be self-sufficient. So Clausen will have a better rec program than Troy has effective July first. We are at the top of our mileage rate. What do you expect the outcome to be? I mean, I had mentioned this evening, two hours ago, that we're going to be closing the library on the website. I didn't want to mention it beforehand because I didn't know what was going to happen with the resolution. I'm hearing now that, well, maybe the library can stay open. I, well, I heard that. So, you know, I'm telling my staff tomorrow morning to find a job somewhere else in the library. A lot of murder going. I'm telling them, it's, it's not going to be anything to do, but they need to do that, okay? The library's going to close. The rec center is going to be budgeted to be based on no general fund subsidy except for debt service on the community center. The nature center is going to be a 501(c)(3) and might be open two days a week. So is the museum. With ICMA, I was able to take the advice of Craig Rapp, who said that when, you know, thanks to the ERA program, I'm very sorry to lose Mary Redden, but he said that was an opportunity to take someone with a master's degree for less money and place that position in her stead. And also had that person take a look at some of the recommendations. He actually suggested the purchasing agent, but Susan Leirstein, with her and one other clerical person, just couldn't do it. So I've asked, and she's accepted, Monica Ireland, who was an intern for us and is now the DDA Director of Emily City, who has a master's degree, who helped us with the restructuring thus far with building department and the golf course. In addition to being an assistant to the city manager, she's going to be charge of, of directing continuous improvement. And her first assignment is to look at every item in the ICMA study and take a look at where we need to go next in terms of the alternatives. I'm going to take those items, ask for a study item, and then share it with city council. And you can help and direct where we go next to take a look at whether we privatize or regionalize or eliminate or consolidate. So we're doing that as well. The budget starts in about, what, five, six weeks, John?
End of April.
End of April. And so I'm wondering, you know, tomorrow, we're closing the library, April thirtieth. We're having a budget that's going to lay off another, what, fifty-four people? July first. We're closing down all these venues, okay? What do you want to know? What do you want to know?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Pritam Kurwin?
I think, and I think, I thank Robin, Councilmember Beltrini, for putting these things simply on her piece of paper. What's the acceptable level of service, of the core services? What we hear from residents is, I want my street plowed. I want the potholes fixed. They care about streets. The question is, what's the price tag to get that done? Those are the questions they want. What kind of police service do they want? Do they want it to include tags, dogs, animals, all of those things or not? And what is the price tag on that? What kind of library do they want? None? Seven days a week? There's a cost that comes with that. If that's a value of the community, we need to know. And we need to find out what the true cost of that kind of a service is. There are firms that do this. I don't think it's our job to be writing these questions tonight at this table. My frustration is that we know we need to engage folks and stop just thinking, well, maybe we're hearing at a meeting, we hear 15 from this side, 15 from that side. But we know from human beings that we encounter in the grocery store, walking, wherever we are, that people are like, what happened to my city? In order to determine what kind of city they want, these questions will help guide us. It's not, it's been reactive for us in cutting. So that's, that's one thing. Let me just say one more thing if I can. And that is, I'm kind of stunned on what you just said, and I'll tell you why. When option one came out and was declared, at that point, I would have thought that there would be clear direction for all what option one meant. On that postcard that was printed over a year ago, it delineates. So today is his face, oh my gosh, look, the library's closing. Until you heard differently, Mr. Manager, that library was closing. Because that's what option one said. So there in fact should have been plans for everyone regarding this closure and how it would be done and what the steps would be. Had something changed, had a resolution passed, then the reverse would have happened. But not, let's just wait until and we'll see if something happened. Does something happen? Was that decision when that budget was passed? And I'm surprised by your response.
Over two months ago, we put together for city council, I think it was two months ago, what was going to happen as a result of zero funding for the library effective July 1, 2011. We had a schedule that indicated what we'd do with the books and what we'd do with the building and how the doors would close April 30th. Subsequent to that, city council scheduled a study item to see if there would be a way to save the library. A resolution was introduced to see if the library could be saved. My staff says, John, we have to notify the public that we're closing April 30th. I said, it's my responsibility, I says, no, your request is denied because then what I'm doing is I'm being a future teller and saying that city council is not going to vote on this resolution in the affirmative. So I'm closing. So I had, everything hit the skids at that point. Now, tonight, and I have clarification, we're going to proceed as planned. But I work for a governing body and you, it's your budget, okay? It was your option. I gave you more than two options. And you defined core competencies, you approved the budget as a governing body. That's what we're doing. We're laying off people in accordance with that, over 22% of the workforce thus far. You've asked for an independent third-party review through ICMA. We gave that to you. They told us, you know what, guys? You've cut so many people and we've reduced our payroll, our payroll by over $4 million from September 30th, 2009 to September 30th, 2010. I'm sure there's going to be a couple more million dollars from September 30th, 2010 to September 30th, 2011, okay? We're, we have a plan and we're proceeding. But it's not my plan, okay? I did not appreciate for the past year and a half being the head of a split council, but someone had to advise the public what was going on. And then the governing body had to decide what they wanted to do. My preference would have been to have the council in front of me telling me what to do. But I had a duty or responsibility to advise what was going on, to not give you a budget out of balance, to protect the residents as well, where it's most important to have police and fire protection over everything else. And we're losing a great portion of that. The, you know, the city needs to make sure that we're still, that we're still here. We should absolutely engage the public. But again, I think we need to know what that outcome is and we're at the top of our millage rate. I think it would be disingenuous to engage the public and say, do you want all these things? Too bad through fiscal year 14, you're not going to get them because we don't have the money. So is the reason to see if the public will support the millage increase? Is that, is that the outcome? And do you want questions structured in line with that?
It's what the true cost would be.
See, I think that your question that you have on your sheet about today's tax levy, is that the maximum that our citizens will pay? If not, what specifically are the citizens willing to pay more for? I think that's the core question. A secondary question is, do we have acceptable level of service at each of our core services? Then list what the core services are and let them tell you. That's why I'm saying, keep it simple, because that's the information that I want to know from people. Not just the people who email us, not just the same people who come to every council meeting and say the same thing. I want to hear from the broader spectrum of the community that are out there. And we can do it through telephone, we can do it through computer, or we can do both. If the costs are in line, I mean.
We can find three firms, absolutely. I don't think I can get to three firms with numbers by next Monday, you know, for you to pass a resolution to authorize a firm to do this. We'll try. If I can get quotations instead of formal bids and just select three firms that do this and see if they can give us a price, try to do that, if that's acceptable for you. But to go out and develop specifications and go out to bid.
Right.
It would, it would be April, by the time it came back.
What, what did you say? What questions were you anticipating, Councilman Slater, that, on your resolution? What things?
You know, I, I thought, you know, why do you need to reinvent the wheel? When I first thought of this, I'm sure ICMA has surveys they've done, other companies. ICMA almost seems like a logical firm to me because they have the surveys that were done internally. They know what we're up against. They could develop maybe better questions for us than maybe some other ones. But I think we should still get three bids. So I wasn't thinking that I was the one that was going to have to invent the wheel. But I would like to know personally if the citizen, if the majority of the citizens here support a millage to keep our library going. Because if they do, I'm willing to step forward to help them out. I don't know if anybody else does, but I'm willing to. If they say, you know, I would pay for a dedicated millage to the library. And I think my whole premise of doing an outside firm to come in here and take a look at, at what we're doing was to make sure that we're doing the best we can, but more importantly, to show the public and show our citizenry that we're not lying to you. You know? Here we had an outside firm come in and reaffirm what's going on. To me, that was more important. Because there's, there's no trust out there. You know, we, we come in here every other Monday or every Monday and get beat up for a couple hours by, one side beats half of us up and then the other side beats the other half up. We take it because we have to. But, you know, somehow we got to find the trust back here. And if we can't find the trust back here, we're out of business, you know? I want to know what the citizens are willing to pay. Once they're, once they're satisfied with that we're doing our due diligence. I can't help part of the people that live here that aren't ever going to believe anything I say. And I'm sure Martin feels the same way, that there's part of this society out here that's never going to believe anything that he says. But I want, I'm more concerned about the other people in the middle. So I think we're doing our due diligence. I want to know, do they believe us? Do they think we're doing what we said we were going to do? And what are they willing to pay? I'm more concerned of what are they willing to pay?
What's that company that does all, you keep reading in the paper that does all those surveys all the time? AMR?
AMR, but we'll do that.
I know, I know. But there are companies that can do that specifically and they just ask a few questions. And they don't go on a spiel about, I mean, their opinion before they ask them.
I'm, I'm not looking at it as being some sort of a about-us kind of thing, but about what, what people want from, from their community. Not about establishing trust or gee, haven't we done this? Not all of that stuff. But what do you want in your community? And that's why these questions are the best guideline, I think.
Got it? Well, and Gaines said something, and I, and I think it's important. He said, you know, will people pay for the library? So I think you put a library question on there in the same format. You know, a, a 2010 level of service in the library, which we all know is reduced, but all services must be reduced.
Yes or no?
To some amount. I, is that an acceptable level? And this is what it takes. Just like to retain.
The real cost.
A 2010 level of service in the police department or road maintenance or anything else because there are some efficiencies that we can over time clean. But there are also going to be some cost increases that we cannot foresee. So I, I would, I know that it is difficult. And we are never going to have the proof that every single taxpayer or voter wants because each household balances their budget differently. And therefore, if the city's not balancing like I balance my household budget, that's not good enough. And each of the seven of us have constituencies who believe everything we say and constituencies who believe nothing we say. So that's just a fact of leading in this town. So, yeah, take the core competencies and start there. And this is what it takes to maintain given levels of service. And if you want to have two or three levels of service for each, or one, or whatever. But we know what it costs because we know what you're cutting out of the budget every year as you decrease that service. So the math's already been done.
Unfortunately, yes.
And, but just because we ask a library question doesn't mean that we've stepped away from the fact that the decision's been made as closing.
No, no.
In April. But we want to find out for future, and we want to find out about the tax levy, given that some communities are out there, correct? Garden City's asking for 12 mils.
I know.
There's votes tomorrow in some communities on specific millage for specific.
Dedicated.
Parts of their, dedicated millage for their budget. We need to ask the people on a broad range that question. That's where I'm coming from. And that'll, that'll help us a great deal with a lot of our decisions.
Specifically on the library, a city-operated library. Because we still don't know what happened in November. What, what was it? Was it some letter? Was it something else? Or was it the idea of an independent library rather than a city library? So a city library should be something that's specified.
Do you have any question you want to ask us, Jen?
Only if.
I don't know, I haven't heard from everybody, but go ahead.
From my perspective, it appears that our public engagement resident experts are Robin and Mary. And so I normally close the agenda like at 12 o'clock on Tuesday for the following Monday, which is like in about 13 hours from now. And so if the balance of the council doesn't mind, I'd like to get with Mary and Robin scratch. I've got to get some kind of specification for someone. I can't give them a narrative. I need to be very specific in terms of what sorts of questions they could ask. And I think I could use their help in this regard. It's got to be like tomorrow. I'm okay with that.
As I already said, what I want.
All right. That helps, appreciate it.
Before we just end this meeting, Madam?
Right, yes.
Is that all you want to do? Survey the public? Is that all you want to do?
No, those are their strategies, the public engagement strategies. Setting up times to meet with all of those different groups, other groups who would like to meet with us. But again, it's not a staff-initiated thing, except for setting the calendar. Now, does, does that mean that there's no staff there? Well, of course, there has to be some staff there. I would actually hope that we have a pair of blue guys there.
I think there are two things that have to happen if that's the way we go. And, and I think it's great. There has to be a consistent level of factual information that in all those sessions are predicated and distributed, and that will have to be staffed. So that has to happen. And then as we do that, the, the people with whom we have these discussions have to be allowed to discuss with each other. I mean, that is where particularly, if you talk about the trust issue, this, this telly mark, public comment that we get with people saying, I don't believe you and I don't believe you and all of that. They have to sit down and work that out. And, and we have to facilitate that. Because everyone we hear genuinely loves the city. They are not happy with something that's going on now. So we have to let them talk amongst themselves as well as with us. And so that is the one thing, as we have those conversations, that I would say is an absolute necessity that you be prepared for.
I really envisioned a lot more listening than the talking. I know we've talked about, you know, well, we'll want to give the same information. We do, we need a fact sheet. So we need, and that would be helpful for residents to have a fact sheet. But more of it is a listening thing. And I, and I, and, and we, and we can't do that in an email of five lines.
No, we can't.
Even spending all day writing five lines, you can't do it. We need to hear from people and.
And they need to hear from each other.
And they need to hear from, to make it community again, to bring it back to community. It's all about the bar raising, isn't it?
So you two are having a conversation right now.
But that's okay with everybody else. I mean, that's.
Yes, as long as we don't. As long as we already nail down the other piece. And John's going to talk to you two about questions.
Okay, then we can try.
I'm going to send you as well.
And I gave you my question already. Because, yeah, we can go there. I have no problem with talking to other, and having groups talk to each other about things and facilitating that. But I just want to make sure we get the other done. And can we find out about, were we thinking on this other, going backwards now? Telephone and computer or one or the other? Depending on the cost?
Depending on the cost.
Pardon?
Depending on the cost.
Okay.
I recall, if I may, I recall an ICMA survey about maybe seven, 10 years ago, it was about $12,000 to $14,000.
Well, let's just see what, what comes back.
That's the community survey.
Yeah.
That's a satisfaction in how you.
Yeah, that was a different kind of thing.
I said that to reference the cost.
Right, yeah. But I don't know what the costs are today for that. And I have no idea what running a computer survey costs either.
Give them information on what it costs today.
All right? That's the other thing we need to find out. I don't know if Cindy knows about that, Jen, about computer survey costs?
Like a survey monkey or something.
I'll bring Cindy in.
All right, okay. All right, anything else?
There's two resolutions you need to pass.
Okay.
The amended and then amended.
Okay.
Okay, this is.
Amendment?
To 28.
To 28, okay.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howardback?
No.
Kurwin?
Yes.
McKinnon?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
And Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Okay, this is amended, so we already have.
Okay.
Councilmember Beltrini moved it and Kurwin seconded.
Right.
Okay, Howardback?
No.
Kurwin? Curwen?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shawin?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
And Fleming?
Okay. Motion passed. All right. Anything else? Okay. I want to measure.